Good evening, everybody. Today is September 27th. Welcome, everybody, to our City Hall. This is our Climate Action Planning Workshop meeting that we are having with our City Council. As promised, the previous meeting we had was on August 26th of 2021, and we tasked our staff to bring some plans forward and something in detail for us to see through this council, so we can discuss it up here on the dais about the direction we're heading and where we're And we've got, by the way, for those out in the audience, we've got this wonderful notebook that's got seven tabs in it. I don't know how many pictures, maybe 100 of them, or different examples of things, different sections that we'll be going over in detail, just kind of a, for your information. One call out I want to make, though, is the Climate Justice League from the high school. We had a presentation. We have some of those young people with us this evening that came to our September 20th Moscow City Council meeting, gave us a good presentation, and along with the petition, as well as around 400 signatures. I will confess, I didn't count every single one of them, so I will take for granted it was that amount. But we certainly appreciated what these young people are doing and moving this movement forward for climate action, climate control, and climate different things that we need to do. And so I want to thank them again. I thank them, of course, at the council meeting, because it is a big deal for all of us in the future and the direction we're going. And with that, Tyler, I will turn it over to you, Sir Tyler Palmer, our Deputy Director, and we've got Kyle Steele here, and we do have Kelly Cooper will be joining us shortly as we go along. Now, there she is, right there.
Yes, yay.
Now, this lady here, ladies and gentlemen, nobody be angry for being a little few minutes late, because she works tirelessly making these things happen for us. And so we're happy to see what her presentation is as well. With that, Tyler, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We're very excited to be here today. As the mayor indicated, we had a climate workshop on August 26th. It was a two-fold purpose for that workshop.
April.
Excuse me, April 26th.
Right.
On April 26th, and it was a two-fold workshop. It was, to one, to celebrate something that was actually really cool. It was the city's achievement of the 20% by 2020 goal. This was the first tangible goal that had been set in the state of Idaho, and the city achieved that goal in 2020, and we were able to reduce our carbon emissions for city operations by 20%. And that was a big effort that took a lot of work between many departments, a lot of policies that the council passed, plans. It was something that didn't just happen. Despite growing, the city was able to cut back on its carbon emissions by 20%. So that was a big accomplishment. But in that meeting, we were tasked with the council, tasked by the council, to come back to you with more information, so that we could continue this process of drafting an effective climate action plan for the city of Moscow. And so just as a reminder of where we're at and a little bit of our purpose for today, the council requested some information, so that they could determine the scope and scale of the climate action plan that they wanted to adopt for the city of Moscow. And so we laid out a schedule that we would be back today, and this is our September workshop, with the goal of this workshop being getting direction from you all on the scope and scale that you would like to see incorporated in a climate action plan. So to that end, we have worked on putting together sequestration numbers. We've worked on putting together potential programs that we can participate in. We have done a review of many climate action plans, both domestically and internationally. We have looked at both city operations and community-wide initiatives that we'll be presenting to you all today, so that you can give us direction on where you would like us to go. And then from here, the goal will be that we will start with the direction that we received from you today to begin the process of drafting a climate action plan. There are many organizations that have been very helpful up to this point. There are a lot of interested parties. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize a few just right here up front. The mayor already mentioned Kelly. Kelly has done an amazing amount of work on this. Kyle Steele and his staff with our Environmental Services Department have all been heavily involved. The Sustainable Environment Commission has been amazing. They've put in a lot of work. The Climate Action Work Group of the Sustainable Environment Commission has been a key contributor to this process, and we've had a lot of interested parties, nonprofits throughout town, individuals. The mayor mentioned our high school students with Climate Justice League. A lot of people have been very helpful and have contributed, and we'll rely on them heavily as we continue to draft this plan to help us, because our goal is to truly have a plan that reflects the desires of the community and what you all want to see as far as climate action. So with that, you have your packet in front of you, and we have a presentation. The way that this will be structured is that we've tried to break this into digestible pieces and then give you the opportunity to ask clarifying questions and give us feedback in these sections, similar to the workshop that we had in April. And so in section one of your packet, and this packet is available, anybody who is here in the audience, there's a link there on the screen, and that will take you to the full packet. So anybody who would like to see the full packet, it's on the screen. If you have any trouble finding it, it's also on the city's social media pages and on the city's website under the Environmental Services tab. So all of the information that we have, plus a lot of technical backup information, is contained within that link. And so as we go through the presentation, the subsequent sections will go through the different sections that we will need to review, things like the climate inventory for the city with sequestration numbers included, the community-wide climate inventory, we'll look at a climate impact document, we'll look at climate action plans, we'll look at some prospective frameworks. And then we will solicit direction from you all on the mode that you would like to proceed with this. So with that, I am going to let Kelly go ahead and kick this off and start working through some of the technical data of this presentation. As you know, it is a workshop. At any point, if any of you have questions that you'd like to ask us, please feel free. If it is something that we will cover later in the presentation, we'll just let you know that that's something that will be upcoming later in the presentation.
We want all stones unturned. Hi, Kelly, welcome with us.
Hi. Thank you. Sorry for being a few minutes late.
It's okay.
All right. So, quick, first slide here is just a quick agenda for today, so we'll go through a recap of where we left off last time in April, and then we'll do, I'll cover that sequestration carbon offsets, information that you requested, as well as the community-wide emissions inventory, and then we'll jump right into climate action plans.
Well, that was pretty quick.
And now we're done. We totally agree.
Any questions?
You did a great job.
I'm a little too old to try to keep going around, so please.
Too many things at once, too much technology, it's me. Okay, so you probably recognize this slide from our last presentation, so this is just where we left off. We covered our 20-20% reduction goal, how we got there, and all those things, and then we also covered some projects to help us see an additional reduction. With that in mind, we got about a 6%, based on the projects that I could easily determine a reduction for at purchased operations. That's where we're at here. So then, you guys asked me to look at the other side of the equation and look at that carbon sequestration and offset. What does net zero look like for operations? So it started with carbon sequestration. So I reached out to our partners at ICLI and asked, you know, how can we go about looking at this? They recommended a program called Eye Tree Canopy, which was developed with the U.S. Forest Service, as well as the Davy Tree Expert Company, and then with support from the Arbor Day Foundation and others. So it's really this nationally recognized program. What it does is it takes a user-defined area. In this case, for operations, we looked at city facilities, city parks, and any city-owned and managed lands. And it takes an aerial overview of those, and then we can do a ground analysis, ground cover analysis, based on what's included in that, in those areas. So this is the result. We've got almost 400 metric tons of carbon offsets for our tree canopy in those areas, and then another 46 metric tons for our grass areas and our herbaceous plants. So what does that look like for our offsets? So we have, in this graph, we just have our 20-20 emissions, and then we have what our offset was, our total offset for carbon sequestration. So you can see, we get about 11.5% reduction or offset by our carbon sequestration, and this is an annual sequestration rate at current conditions.
And that, 33, 44, is what we still need to make up.
That's what's left.
That's correct.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
So I looked at some ways that we can maybe increase our sequestration. One of those ways is we are traditionally a prairie area. All right, so I just, I know this graphic isn't very clear. It wasn't very high quality when I pulled it in, but I just want to point out, right here, this little circle right here, this is our turf grass, and how deep these roots go. So even though it does sequester, right, any plant that grows does sequester carbon, it doesn't pull it very deep into the soil, and it leaves it vulnerable to re-emitting. So I propose we move to native plants in areas that make sense. Obviously, we still need to maintain some of those green lawn spaces in our parks for our citizens to use, but with prairie plants like these, we actually get this carbon way down deep in the ground, where it's not as likely to be re-emitted through soil disturbance. So we kind of got this, you know, underground forest, if you will, of all these root structures. So we really want to look at that. And then, of course, increasing our acridin trees, where it makes sense. We don't want to be putting trees out in the middle of somewhere that's going to be hard to water or hard to get it to actually thrive and grow. Otherwise, it defeats the purpose.
Kelly?
Yep.
Does the system that evaluated the sequestration from the plantings, will it calculate these different types of plants, or does it not get that detail?
It doesn't quite get that detail. With Eye Canopy, we can actually put in our own rates, to some extent, when they're known. So right now, the way I've used it is with a regional average that was developed by the Forest Service.
I love that.
Isn't it such a cool graphic?
That makes me so happy to see that.
It was really just reinforcing with, some folks on the council may remember, a few years ago, we did a full analysis when we did a side-by-side comparison of the Wysscape versus the grass here at City Hall, after we had installed the Wysscape, and we set it up to truly do that comparison. We put a separate water meter on it, and we tracked all the inputs, every minute of a mower, all the gas, all the fertilizer, everything. And, you know, across the board, it was cheaper, it was less water to maintain the natural landscapes, and it's good for pollinators and everything else. And so we've had some very productive work. Our Parks Department has been really great to work with, and starting those conversations, you'll recall, we had the initial program of goldening the grass, browning the grass where appropriate, the strategic watering plan, and then we have, we've had some conversations and are starting the process of looking at, okay, at each park, having a good plan for where is it appropriate to have grass? Because it is appropriate in certain places. We've got ball fields, you know, you want the kids to be able to play soccer, have a baseball game, but it doesn't need to be everywhere. There might be a lot of green strips, for example, that may not need them. And then, yeah, returning to these native plants, it's pretty cool.
Well, and it also tells us, it helps us with our water usage and our atmosphere, so that we can keep that to a minimum, and we're trying to achieve as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Many co-benefits. All right, so I also looked at the possibility of carbon offsets. So this would be if we purchased renewable energy credits from Avista, through their program called My Clean Energy. At current rates, their national program is one cent per kilowatt hour. So provided, just to provide you an idea of what this would cost, up here, we have the last three operations inventories that I did, and then the calculated amount that that energy use for those years would cost us.
And so just some context for what that program entails. It uses renewable energy credits, and so the way that renewable energy credits work, and Mr. Paul Kimmels here, so if I butcher this, he can correct me. But on the market, there's the ability to buy energy that's actually produced through renewable sources, and so participation in this program through that, Avista will make sure that the equivalent of your energy is purchased through those renewable sources, if it's not something that they have the capacity to supply through renewable sources themselves. Paul, is that accurate?
And so it's a way that we can offset some of that carbon impact by the city and assure that the energy that we're using is coming from renewable sources.
Avista Corporation is really helping lead the charge in this, too. They have been an excellent corporate partner for communities in trying to get this endeavor moved forward. And so I want to, yes, I'm putting a plug in for Avista, and they need it, because they've done an excellent job over the years, and they continue to do that.
Well, they were a great partner in reaching our 20% by 2020 goal. You know, really, if it wasn't for their cooperation in the work with our residential streetlights, that really put us over the edge, and they really made a lot of effort to help us reach that goal. So I agree, Mr. Mayor, they've been a great partner.
So relative to the program, is there a concomitant decrease in electrical production from natural gas or coal plants, or is this just buying these renewable credits? I'm not quite clear on how this works.
So it's buying the renewable credits, Mr. Bettke, but eventually, the overall impact of that is more people to participate. This funding is going toward those renewable sources, and so as demand surges for the renewable sources, and that becomes a bigger portion of the market, then more renewable sources are developed. Paul, was there, was that an accurate statement?
So by extension, then, would you expect eventually, when it is all renewable sources of energy, that this program, there's no need for it anymore, because it's been funded to the point where your portfolio is entirely green energy?
Yeah. I mean, this is a bridge program, because, yeah, you wouldn't be paying extra for renewable, because it's all renewable. It's all renewable sources is where it's coming from.
So there is eventually a decrease in alternative generating types?
Yes. Yes, and as part of Avista's commitment for, with their clean energy commitments in 2035 and '45, I guess it's 2027 even, now, like, they're already having to work pretty aggressively toward adding more renewables to their portfolio.
Okay, so just to give you an idea, you know, data-speaking-wise, what that would mean for our inventory. So I pulled up our, created this graph of our emissions by source or by scope, and as is usually the case for operations, we have 60% of our overall emissions that actually come from purchased electricity. So if we're getting all of our, through this program, if we're essentially getting all of our energy from renewable sources, 60% of our inventory essentially goes away, is offset.
So it's actually a really great opportunity for us, since so much of our greenhouse gas emissions happens with our water and our wastewater in particular, those two very energy-intensive processes, the good news is that since it is largely electricity-driven processes, we have a lot of ability to work on that aspect of our emissions through the electrical offsets.
All right, so just to give you an idea what that looks like in total now, so we have this, our 20-20 emissions, we have our carbon sequestration that I showed you earlier, and then I've added in our offsets by purchasing renewable energy credit services. So then, we only have this, just a little over 1,000 metric tons left that we would have to figure out offset.
So that's only My Clean Energy?
That's right.
No plant?
And that's total city emissions, that's only My Clean Energy, that's the sole, it has the carbon sequestration, Gina, so it does include our carbon sequestration numbers from our canopy and our plants on city properties. That's the 438 that you see there.
Yeah.
And then that additional 2269 is the Avista My Clean Energy program, and it brings us down to that remnant that's left of the 1,074.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next?
Yep. Is it a wireless mouse, or should you bring it over here?
Nope.
All right, so do you have any questions so far? Go back one more. I guess we can.
Do you guys have any questions on the sequestration numbers or any of that data up to this point? Okay, so that was largely what was in Section 3, so we'll be diving into the next section.
Yep. All right, so now we're going out to community-wide. This is done with the assistance of Luke Fuwano for U of I class, Jeff Hickey, one of Jeff Hickey's class at U of I. He did a lot of the legwork on this to get this developed while I was busy preparing for the April workshop, and then, and a lot of help from ICLI as well, so he was able to take on a lot of that for us and produce this. So what we have here, we have, similarly to our operations inventory, it breaks everything out into sectors. So for community-wide emissions, we have seven sectors: residential energy, commercial energy, transportation and mobile sources, solid waste, water and wastewater, industrial energy, and then upstream impacts. And so what I've done here, our energy, of course, in these sectors also includes natural gas, so I've broke it out here for you, so roughly, you know, 13% is natural gas in our residential sector, which is a total of 37%. So in total, we have about 150,734 metric tons carbon community-wide. So just to give you an idea of the scale we're talking about here, I also added in, because, of course, community-wide includes our own emissions, our operations emissions, to give you the idea of scale, we have, our operations emissions ends up at about 3% of our total. So really, even if we get to that net zero with our operations, which is really important still, we're just barely scratching the surface of the overall emissions for the city. See, it's going to work for you.
Yeah.
I'll just let you get it. So again, I broke it down by scope, so you could see emissions by source. So purchased electricity makes up about 48%, combustive fuels is 46%, and then our other, which includes our solid waste, our upstream impacts, and things like our off-gassing from our wastewater treatment, those are all included in our other, that's another 6%. So just so I can give you the full picture, I also looked at community sequestration, using the same program as I did for operations, only the user-defined area in this case is actually everything within city limits. So it covers our whole urban forestry, including any facilities, city facilities and parks within city limits. So we get 2,656 from our trees, metric tons, and then 444 from our herbaceous plants and grass areas. These glow-on batteries, although it doesn't look like it is. All right, so again, we wanted to give you that comparison. So our total carbon emissions for 2019 is on the left-hand side of the screen, and then our carbon sequestration is on the right. And we really don't get that great, awesome-looking offset that we do with our operations emissions, but we still do see at least 2% offset per year by sequestration.
So, yeah, you'll notice that our offset for just the city was about 11%, and the offset community-wide is only about 2%. But when you think about it, the amount of the property that the city has, the bulk of it is in parks, and so it actually starts to make sense that we're going to offset a higher percentage of the city because of the property, the type of properties that we maintain, the vegetation on said properties.
All right, any questions on community inventories so far?
One thing I want to, just a point I want to make, Kelly, we're very blessed in this community of ours, the University of Idaho, and we have a ton of people that are very well-educated and forthright, bringing forward to us all kinds of different recommendations, and part of those folks are on our commissions to make this happen, and I just want to do a shout-out for, thanks to them for being a part of this. It's really helping our community.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. The participation that we've had from people, we do have a lot of local people who have a lot of expertise and a lot of education, and it's been just massively helpful to have those people involved and help get additional eyes on this. We've been fielding a lot of ideas and had a ton of support from people throughout the community, and it's been very helpful. And this next section just really illustrates that point.
Yes, it does. So this is Section 4, is our community, our climate change impacts assessment. We'd be remiss in not considering the impacts of climate change when considering planning for climate change. So I just wanted to do, I pulled out a few of the big main impacts out of that climate impacts assessment. You haven't had a chance to read it yet. I highly encourage you to do so. We've already seen things like heat waves. For the first time ever, the city of Moscow had to open cooling centers this summer. We've also had a huge drought this year. It's impacted our water pumping and all, you know, impacts our conservation goals. Fire season. I don't know how many more days I can stand and smoke, especially for somebody who doesn't have air conditioning in their house. Heat and smoke is a really bad combination for people in those kind of situations. But even flooding, we had that crazy flash flood in 2019. So these are things we need to consider in our planning efforts.
I actually had a question, Kelly, before we move on. So if I heard you correctly, our contribution as a city is 3%, but I'm not seeing that reflected in this graph. Am I, did I misunderstand?
Oh, in the...
Yeah, so it's back to community-wide emissions.
It's not, it's because it's not separated out in the initial, in the initial graph. I just wanted to give you an idea of scale. We would be, most of our emissions would fall into the commercial category on this graph.
And what does LGO stand for, again?
LGO stands for Local Government Operations.
Thank you. That was my question.
I have one question, too, about that tree canopy thing. So with the citywide part, I think you said that you included any city-owned property. It looks like maybe on that map is that Virgil Phillips farm that's there on the north?
It did for the, for city operations.
But then for the actual community-wide, that part is not included?
I did not include that.
We just use the city boundaries for the community-wide. So there would be, in the scale of the community-wide, it would be a very minuscule difference, but as we move forward, once something's established, we could include both Virgil Phillips and, let's see, the property, there's a small property.
Mountain view.
Yeah. There's one other small property outside of city limits that would be included, but in the context of these numbers, it's a tiny fraction of a decimal point.
Okay, thanks.
So all these climate change impacts came out of the climate impacts assessment that was completed by members of COG with expertise at U of I, Jeff Hickey and Michael Jennings, Dr. Hickey and Dr. Michael Jennings, were instrumental in getting that done and written for us, which is, which is great. This is something that would have, we could have spent a lot of time on, just to get, just to get the impacts assessment done. It's huge. All right, next slide.
Yeah, it was a very, and as you read through it, you'll see, it's a very comprehensive impact assessment, and as Kelly mentioned, this is just a perfect example of how local committed folks helping us, Dr. Hickey, Dr. Jennings, helping us work through this process, because, I mean, this is the kind of thing that cities will often pay tens of thousands of dollars for this type of work, and so this was, it was really good to get this climate assessment completed.
All right, so starting here, we're going to cover kind of Sections 5 and 6, except for you went too far ahead.
Yeah.
I wasn't done with this slide. All right, so Tyler mentioned in the very beginning, we looked over climate action plans, both nationally and internationally, of cities of varying sizes, to get a feel for what kind of action plans there are out there, and what, to get a feel for what kind of plan we might want to move forward with. So there were three basic categories of climate action plans. The low-carbon plan simply looks at reducing the amount of emissions that you produce. So that's what we pretty much did with our 20-20 goal, is looked at how far can we reduce our emissions. Then we have our net-zero plans, which we touched on last time a little bit, but that's where we look at that reduction, those mitigation strategies, but also those sequestration strategies, how can we pull more out of the air. And then we have our resiliency plans, which look at those reductions, it looks at those, that sequestration, how can we balance those scales, but then also look at how can we deal with the impacts that we're expected to see or already see. All right, now you can move to the next slide. All right, so these are covered in Section 6, the framework section. We looked at several different options as far as potential frameworks for us to use moving forward. These could be applied to just an operation type, climate action plan, or to a community scale. Science-based target network is one that we came across. It actually helps us, it provides this five-step framework that helps us develop a plan. It helps us set science-based targets, which is really important. Mostly, science-based target networks, though, has done things for corporations. So, but they've worked with other environmental agencies like ICLI that we are members of, World Wildlife Foundation, C40 Cities, and some other big ones, to develop this same framework for cities. The guide for that is in your packet, if you would like to read through it. But really, what this comes down to is this would require, if we want just with this route, it would require a lot more work for city staff, because we would be the ones actually doing all the calculating and the development.
It was actually pretty gratifying, you know, in looking back, as we started this process of looking at frameworks, looking at what was available to the city when the 2010 goal was set for 2020, and to see the amount of work that's happened in the last decade and the amount of options that are available. You know, we participated with ICLI through a program that they had then, and that was part of the framework that we used to establish that initial goal, but there really has been a proliferation of work done, especially at the local level, on climate action. And so it was, it was really... And so it was, it was really nice to not have to be able, to not be forced to reinvent the wheel or invent our own wheel during these processes, because there, there is, there are a lot of good frameworks and then a lot of good work done over the last decade.
Next slide. I feel like I'm on a Zoom call. All right, Race to Zero was another one that we covered. This is actually the one that ICLI uses currently. It uses the science-based targets, which is really great, but with, with joining Race to Zero, it actually provides us a lot of that technical expertise through ICLI to help us develop those science-based targets, and help us set those, those carbon-neutral goals and those interim goals at two thousand and thirty. Another thing I'd just like to point out about this, this program is that it's, it's sort of the grown-up version of the one that we joined back in two thousand and seven, that got the city started on the climate action goals. So this is sort of the grown-up version of Cities for Climate Protection. It gives a, a much more robust framework and actually helps set those, those targets a little bit more, and helps you reach them. Not just, it's not just signing a resolution that says, "We wanna do this," and then having to figure it all out on our own. It actually provides us those resources.
Well, Kelly, the, and you, you hit an important, an important point there. We're doing this, and we're taking the, the time to go through this so that we do it right, and we actually achieve something, and we move forward. This council, and myself, is not interested in signing some kind of a resolution just to put a number on there. We wanna have an action, we wanna have an action plan, we wanna move forward, we have it in a step-by-step way that we're doing it. And this is how we're gonna achieve, so I know I'm speaking for council, and they'll speak for themselves as well, but we're very serious and interested in doing this in a methodical, right, correct way. So, thank you, I just wanted to say that.
Oh, I did it, see, I wasn't paying attention. So we also looked at Sierra Clubs Ready for One Hundred, which is a good goal. It seeks, it focuses mostly on energy and energy use, which is really important. We saw a huge, a huge chunk of our, our inventory is energy-driven, right? It's all electrical and natural gas use is a huge portion of our inventory. So it's important to look at this. But the, the, the part that's really was lacking for me, I guess, is they don't have a specific framework already, already laid out for how we could get to that goal. But the thing is, that's important to notice too, is that this, it's not mutually exclusive. In seeking to reach a carbon neutrality goal through another program, we can still look at and achieve a hundred percent renewable, or a hundred percent clean energy. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Tyler?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, so just kinda like Kelly said, as, as, as we started to look through these programs, it was, it was interesting to have these three programs kind of overlap in a lot of ways. And there's, there's kind of been a convergence on, of, of goals as far as it seems like in city operations and city climate plans. And so having, having scientifically-based goals is really important, looking at, okay, making sure we're actually doing something, and that we're actually having an impact. And then for us, you know, with the ICLI framework of the, the Race to Zero, it, it, it was in line with a lot of the work that we've done, and we've worked with ICLI. And basically, as we looked at this, in, in meeting the provisions of the Race to Zero, we would also be in alignment with the Sierra Clubs RF One Hundred. And so there would be, there wouldn't be anything that kept the council from committing to both, because largely within the work that we'd be doing, the provisions for both would be met. And so as Kelly said, they're, they're not mutually exclusive, they're both good programs, they're both doing a very important thing, and it's something that the city can pursue simultaneously, or could, if that was the direction that the council wanted to go.
And that's essentially what Boise did. See, I'll notice in the slides that Boise actually is committed to Race to Zero, one of the thirty-one cities nationwide. And then they've also committed to, to RF One Hundred. And last I read an article, they were actually slated to meet that goal for their RF One Hundred goal early. It's significantly early. And so that is something we can certainly look at as, as part of our climate action planning. All right, so jumping back a little bit to section five, I just wanted to point out, I went through a lot of the city plans that are already in existence, and there's a lot of climate action planning already being done. It's just not necessarily called that or called out. So we've already got a lot of adaptation pieces built in for a resiliency plan, and things like our stormwater management, our water conservation, hazard mitigation, all those things, set us up to prepare us for those impacts that we might see. Our comp plan has things built into it that's, that set us up for, for meeting some of those goals to reduce our transportation emissions, for, for being able to sequester more carbon through our street trees and, and things like that, even, even those things are important. So I just wanted to really point out that, that we wouldn't be starting from ground zero, we already have a good base.
Yeah, I, I think this was something that as we started working through this process, it was one of the most gratifying things to see, was just the good work that, that our previous leaders had done in Moscow. Because a lot of communities, as they start to look at this stuff, it's pretty daunting, because they're, they're not starting with the foundation that we've got. And we've already got over years and years and years of working on this through various city councils and mayors, like, there's a lot of groundwork already laid, and a lot of things that, that, so a lot of these programs that, that have been established over the years, processes that have been established over the years, have had a big impact. I, we just, we actually just ran the numbers, got our, our initial numbers back today on our hybrid police patrol vehicles. And our initial numbers coming back are showing a sixty-one percent increase in efficiency just with the hybrid police vehicles. So those, those small decisions that the councils made over the years to say, "Yeah, you know what, we're gonna pay a little bit more money, and we're gonna, we're gonna have hybrid vehicles, and the police department being willing to work with us on that." Like, that one small decision can have a pretty significant impact. And then I, you know, as the mayor always says, these big problems, we gotta break them into little pieces, work on them a little bit at a time. And so when we attack those from multiple angles like that, so all these plans have components that really do that.
One of my famous sayings, everybody, and some people have heard this multiple times, it's like eating an elephant, it, you know, one bite at a time, it takes a while. But the, the point of the matter is, is if you have a strong foundation, you can build upon that foundation, you can build the high-rise as you're going along, so to speak, right? And that's what we're looking at doing here, and that groundwork has been working for the last ten or eleven years. That we, and we're gonna build upon that base, and it's solid.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. And you know, with, with those things, it's, it's been, it's been a great thing, because with some items like that, you know, our twenty percent goal, the, we'll, we'll, we'll likely be the first entity in the state to have a hybrid police patrol fleet completely changed over. Moscow's been a leader and been willing to be a leader. We're not big enough, and we don't have the resources to just be the guinea pigs with every single thing that comes along. But when there's, when we've done our research, we make sound decisions, but we are willing to lead in these areas, and those are, those are some good examples of that.
All right, so obviously, we looked over several climate action plans. So just to give you an idea, some, some plans that don't exist within the city of Moscow as of yet, and what other cities are doing, just to give you some ideas.
These are some of, what, what these are are just some examples of, of ways that other communities have tried to, beyond what their utility companies are doing, because really, the bulk of this work is happening at the utility company level, like at, at the energy provider level. Nationwide, that's where the bulk of this work really has to happen, is, is where that energy comes from. But these are some examples of programs that cities have, have, have started in order to try and push climate action out into the community, so beyond just city operations.
I'd like to point something out to Tyler, because we have Arbor Day in the spring, and, uh, and I think we do a very good job of that very thing, about giving seedlings out, and having folks plant trees. And I notice Boise, Idaho, in here frequently, and I just wanna say something, you know, the University of Idaho is a flagship university in this state, and so of course, we need, yeah, Moscow's name up here on a bunch of different things, because I just wanted to throw that plug out every single time I get a chance.
Yeah, I'm sure any, any other city in, in the region or country who gave this presentation at their council meeting, it's gonna be rife with Moscow's examples, Mayor. We've got, we do, we have, we have a lot of good examples of things that we've done that are, that are pretty cool.
So the mayor already mentioned Boise has their hundred K trees across the city by two thousand and thirty, and then they're planting two hundred and thirty-five K trees in nearby forests by two thousand and thirty as well.
Might be a weird question for you, Kelly, and if it is, I don't mean to tax your brain.
Okay.
But Boise's a lot bigger than we are, do you know that, that number would be here to be equivalent?
No.
So I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thanks, Sandra, thanks for having me.
I could certainly figure that out for you.
No, right, no, we're good.
Well, you know, that might, the, just to Sandra's point, that might be something worthwhile to have, and maybe kind of a fun goal to, to throw out there. You know, because we do do Arbor Day, and we do other things, and I think our citizens would be very, not only impressed with that, but it may take the challenge to, to be a huge part of helping with that.
I agree.
I, I think as we move through this process of, of planning level efforts, we'll start to model some of those things.
Having planted, um, a, a fair number of seedlings in my day with Dr. Crawford, who's sitting right back there in the audience. I think we oughta set a survival rate too, if there's any way to do that, just to God.
I agree, and that's not the first time survival rate has come up in the conversations around these. So these are just examples of the way other cities are doing it. I personally like, love Ann Arbor's program. They do ten K trees a year, so they actually set it up first, you know, first come, first served, and they give out ten thousand trees in the spring and the fall. They also have this program where they've, you know, in that equity piece of things, they actually have partners with, with a local distillery to offer a specific drink. And sales from, sales from that drink, actually, the proceeds go to planting trees in low-income neighborhoods. So it kinda brings, it brings that, that full cir, full circle, and not everybody has the resources to get down to a tree pickup.
Well, you never know, we have some breweries in this area that may very well be happy to join in.
Exactly, I could see, I could see Moscow jumping all over that, something like that. Distributed Renewable Energy, Ann Arbor, Michigan, again, they have some great, they, they're a huge climate leader, to be honest with you, nationwide. They're, they're doing, they have a program called Ann Arbor Solarize, which is run similar to our, our sidewalk program. So the idea is, the city acts as kind of that central piece to get those economies of scale, for whole neighborhoods to transition to rooftop solar. So they work with contractors and with solar panel companies to be able to get those prices down for people to be able to afford it, because it is, it is a big upfront cost for things like that. Local food production availability, Whitefish, Montana, I'm gonna give them a shout-out here. So they have incentives built into their climate action plan to, for new construction, to include green space and community gardening space in their new developments. But I also just wanna point out, Whitefish actually, when they were developing their climate action plan, reached out to Moscow to help develop their plan and to help them figure out what their inventory would look like, so.
Kelly, do you know the details of what the incentives are?
Yeah. Not off the top of my head, no.
What are we doing, many of those incentives now?
We, we have, so there, there are a lot of things that we have built in already to our building codes and planning, you know, so, so, and even in our strategic plan, that incorporate a lot of these things, you know, like encouraging infill and encouraging dense development, and we have green space requirements. And so there are a lot of those components that we already have included.
I did not go through all of the zoning and all of those things. That's a whole nother craziness.
It's just more a sense of what do they have that we're not doing, and we seem to be doing a lot.
Uh, building efficiency, Burlington, Vermont, they actually have a green roof policy, an incentive program for their city. So, which, which is also, can also have stormwater impacts, so it keeps the water from running off, which is also great for us as well. And it creates this, you know, it doesn't take as much to cool your home or heat it up, and then...
Is that for commercial as well as residential, or?
I believe so, yes. And then electric vehicle programs, of course, Milwaukee, Oregon, had a great example. They require all their new developments to be electric vehicle-ready. So they don't necessarily put in charging stations every time they put in a new development, but they have it plumbed and ready to go, so that it's easier to put it in later. It's much easier to put it in initially, and much cheaper, but at least this way, it's not as extra-expensive when we do get around to putting it in. And then Burlington, Canada, is just looking at expanding their current infrastructure. Waste reduction, there's always fun things around waste reduction, some of which we've at least considered here and haven't put into place yet. The Milwaukee, Oregon, does a repair fair on a large scale every year. We've done that locally at the library. From what I understand, it was, was successful, so that may be something we can build on, or maybe offer more often in partnership with the library. We've got improved public space recycling is, is always a good thing. And then Burlington, Vermont, they are looking at, at putting in a compost program for residential organics. And then they're also exploring a pay-as-you-throw system for their trash. And then Tyler mentioned this already, we got compact mixed-use development. So finding that, finding those ways to, to incentivize urban infill rather than urban expansion. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, you know, community, community scale means community effort. The city is not the only actor within the city that can, that can have an impact on this. And so it's really important to develop these collaborations and these partnerships with some of our local entities. This list is not exhaustive, which is just the ones I came up with in preparation for this presentation. So we can, we've, we've already worked with some of these entities to do things, is working with them, continually work with them on climate action actually sets us up for grants, granting opportunities, and also just more fingers out into the community to provide the education that we need. A lot of things around climate center on personal action.
So, so with that, what, um, we're, we're ready to open it up to council for any questions and, and conversation. One of the things I, so after our review and conducting this review of this, staff's recommendation is that we proceed to draft a climate action plan based on the ICLI Race to Zero for the city, but also encourage the council to sign on to the RF One Hundred. Both of these measures, we think, fit within the context of what we would need to do, and I think we, they provide a good framework. And, and with that direction, what we could do is work with ICLI to generate what our interim scientific-based steps would be. So they have, you have the overall twenty-fifty, but then there's a twenty-thirty goal that is based, that is, that is generated based specifically on the city of Moscow's factors. So we could begin to work through that process and draft the, the framework for a climate plan, and then also come back with some options for expansion or generation of programs that could, that we think would fit Moscow well, that would, that would help push the climate action initiatives out into the community. And so that, that's what, after reviewing the data, we're recommending to the city council. But with that, we're happy to sit for any questions you all might have.
Something I'd like to throw out there, Tyler, so that would tie in sometime this winter with the strategic planning process, which usually happens, I don't know, around February sometime, so the council can make some of those decisions, because it will impact that next budget year in the budget talks that we talked before, which makes total sense to me. Because it is a climate change, climate control is in the tier-two that, and it will always be, I had mentioned that in Monday night's council meeting, that, that's something that will be an ongoing process. It's not, of course, one, and then it's gonna be going on forever.
And as, as a reminder, Mayor, this is something that we really do, we, we're excited to get feedback from the public. So as we get a draft plan together, we fully intend to push that out to the community and to take public comment, engage with a lot of the groups and individuals that have been so key in helping us get to this point as well. And then the, the goal would be to have a climate plan, a final draft ready for council adoption next spring, so the spring of two thousand and twenty-two is, is what we'd be targeting.
Tyler, and Kelly, or, and Kyle, all of you, I guess, when we're looking at both of these, does this also include in finding different ways to work with new developers and putting it, and helping us devise incentives to help them put in the proper things, whether it's plants, whether it's going to electricity? Does this give us a framework on how to come up with policy to do that?
I'll, I'll give a brief answer, and then I'll actually refer to Bill to fill in on that a little bit. Part of what we would hope to bring back as far as the suite of potential programs to push out in the community may include some of those provisions. As, as we vet through and look at some of these programs, our goal would be to say, "Okay, this one kinda fits what we wanna do, this one doesn't fit what we wanna do." Our, the, the ICLI commitment and the RF One Hundred commitment, what it would allow us to do is we could have a climate action plan that has some flexibility, and so it wouldn't have to necessarily stipulate exactly which programs are gonna be run over a thirty-year period. But there could be programs that, as we look through, make a lot of sense right now. And then we could have a list of potential programs to vet through as we look in the future. So there might even be things that, like, really aren't that feasible now, but they might be very feasible ten years from now. So what we'd like to do is generate a list of, hey, these would be good things that we wanna get the council stamp of approval on now to start these type of things. And maybe these are in that next tier of, these, these are really cool programs that potentially could be implemented down the road. Now, we are, as far as some of the building things, we are, we are limited in the state as far as even what legally we can do. Bill, I don't know if there's anything you wanna chime in on that.
This is Bill Milner.
I imagine ICLI is used to dealing with some states that have those limitations as well.
Yeah, we've worked with ICLI for years, and yeah, they have a lot of participation.
So I mean, certainly, this'll be an opportunity to go through and explore what options might exist. A lot of things that were listed underneath some of the ideas in, in the materials presented before this evening, a lot of those are already incorporated in city code. But certainly, we can look to those that are not, see if it's legally permissible underneath the framework that we have today, because we do have, the legislature does control the building codes. They do preempt and limit local jurisdictions' abilities to change those standards. But certainly, we can explore that through this process and identify what programs might be feasible.
I'd like to make a point here, because we just recently, this council heard, um, a new development and annexations coming to this city, and part of that development had a bunch of interesting things with green space, with the zero escaping of small lawns, no lawns. The native grass, or native planting that we saw earlier would be a natural thing to talk about, some of these folks, and perhaps that guy had that in mind, and I, and I just simply didn't know. But those are the types of things that help us with this carbon going down into the ground, getting us closer to carbon neutral. That may be some kind of an incentive that we can talk to developers about as we're going along, because we've got these housing projects. I think that's a smart move, and we did that, and he was talking about it in relationship to saving water, well, we can kill two birds with one stone, maybe help in those sort of water situation as well as carbon emissions are...
Yeah, it's a bit of an extension of that. I wouldn't mind seeing it all, some more emphasis on the city actually hiring a full-time city forester to look at both replacement of some of our aging-out trees in Fort Russell and some of the older neighborhoods, but also assuring that new trees are planted with subdivisions coming in, and making sure that there is survivability of those trees downstream, because I've seen a lot of areas where the street trees were installed as part of the development, and they promptly died, and now you've got skeletons sitting there doing no one any good. And the whole tree thing keeps popping up through this whole document again, and again, and again, both in terms of carbon sequestration, but also in providing relief from the heat generated by asphalt and heat islands, thereby reducing electrical use for air conditioning and other things like that. And so, I think pushing forward on something like that would be really good, and also, uh, as part of that same individual's responsibilities, reaching out to the public and providing education, because as we saw in the slides, the private sector, the public sector is using the vast majority of carbon in this community, and the city does pretty well. We've got to get buy-in from the rest of our residences if we're going to get any progress made at all. And also, one other thing is the issue with our big energy consumer out at the water reclamation and reuse facility, and the fact that we're fighting an uphill battle with the government, the same agency that wants to see a lot of carbon reduction. They're the ones that are having us buy chillers and spend money on electricity to cool effluent water by a couple of degrees to put it back into Paradise Creek where it warms up again. So, we're fighting a losing battle in some of these areas, and I'm not sure how to address that in an upstream fashion, so that we aren't making the climate change problem worse through this minor alleviation here. It makes no sense.
It'd be great to have zero water going downstream from the plant on down. So, if we could burn that somewhere, that would save us on an art. Now, how we do that, I've got no clue, but I got some ideas, but some people don't think they're very good ideas. I'll share that with the group too, but that's...
Anyway, enhancing the natural sequestration shade, things like that, through, uh, some of the programs we've got going with flood mitigation also involves riparian restoration, which is also a good thing as far as sequestration of carbon goes and providing shade, temperature reduction. So, I think we've got some good things going there as part of other programs, as you guys have already pointed out.
Yeah, well, and I would say with, um, you know, as you pointed out, the water, uh, reclamation reuse facility, right? Uh, is the, the largest municipal user of electricity. So, and like you said, there's not a lot we can do about it, but that's where the My Clean Energy part comes in. So, if we're offsetting that, and that takes care of, I think you said 60% of that?
Cities emissions, yeah.
Just one...
Operations emissions.
Yeah, operations emissions.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's one piece of how you address this whole thing. So, I love that you included all the different parts, including, like, that very challenging thing where we don't have a lot of control, but if over time, the energy that that takes is clean energy, well, that's a huge accomplishment, and that has tackled that issue.
Right.
And we can participate in moving that forward by doing the My Clean Energy, so...
Well, Brandy, one of the comments I made earlier on when we started this presentation was, we're gonna look under every stone, turn every single stone over, let's throw everything out on the table. Some things we may not be able to do, but let's throw some ideas out there. Every once in a while, somebody comes up with an absolute terrific solution for something that we may perceive as a huge, huge problem. And so, we're always looking for that creativity to make that happen, and I'm convinced that we can do that on a number of these things in front of us. No news tasks in front of us. Gina?
I think the more that we, um, model the behavior, the more that we have those, those zero-scape gardens at the corner down here, where people can actually touch and feel and understand what the steps are towards this. Climate change is a scary, big phrase, and, you know, we talk about it, and it feels like, oh, you know, somebody in DC's gotta take care of it. But in reality, if we can see it demonstrated, and if we can, as a city, if we can incentivize low-flow toilets, if we can do the shower things, I love those. I love this concept, and if we can keep the, the zero-scape gardening idea real and vibrant and kind of cool, I think that the more it will just kind of become part of everybody's vernacular. They'll see it, and I, I, I always beat on communication when I'm up here, but I will continue to do that until I'm really gray-haired. It's got to be all the time. Help us understand as citizens that we can actually affect our city's impact as well. Everybody's in this game together.
I, I think that's something that's really important, Gina, is that this, the climate action plan, as we generate this, it gives us an opportunity to take a lot of things that are already happening and happening well, and generate some new things, but put them together in a messaging package that people understand the tie between wisecaping, not just saving water, but also having an impact on climate, and they understand how these decisions are really intertwined. And that's what was encouraging, as we start looking through a lot of these programs, is they're programs that, that, that it's not just a single benefit. There, there's generally broad benefits, you know, we look at like our urban canopy. Well, we, we want to have trees, there are trees that show tons of benefits. Slow down speed, as Mayor indicated, as Art indicated, the, the heat island reduction and all that. Great benefits, and happen to help with our carbon emissions as well. And so, a lot of these programs are so much overlapping, as we get these consolidated into a climate action plan, we can really push that messaging about those multitude benefits.
Maureen?
No, I just, I, I find myself struggling now with a lot of annexations happening, and how to impact those developments now that it's already been approved. And so, whether it's done, your thoughts about annexations, your thoughts about incentives in a different way, I don't know exactly how to do it, but I also think part of education, having people want to do it, and so, education has to be a huge component of it, because we can't force someone to do it now that they want to do it.
I want to throw something kind of interesting out here, because I had this thought while we were sitting here, that I want to throw out to the entire crowd that's with us today. Uh, my wife and I were sitting in our living room on one of those days where our air quality was like 156 from all the smoke, and we woke up, I felt like I'd smoked two bags of cigarettes or something, holy smokes, and talking about this is almost like, that reminds me back of the day, with cigarette smoking, we took it out of public buildings, we stopped, so, you know, we put a stop to it in restaurants, so on and so forth, and the, the, the pushback you got from that. This is, in a way, no different than that. This, this is about survival for us, you know, and that's how I look at it in a way, but I just wanted to throw that out, it just, that thought come across to me. Sometimes I wake up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning thinking about these things. Just thought I'd throw it out to the group. Brandy?
Um, I, I, it's really clear from everything leading up to this meeting right here that you've been working on, that you don't want to just sign on to something and have it be something that we can put our name on a list, that you are putting a ton of time into it. Thank you very much, taking it very seriously, providing us with the information, looking into these options. I, it's been apparent then, and even more so now, that you are very careful with all of this, and if you are recommending that we sign on to Race to Zero and RF-100, that's the direction I would want to go.
I'm also gratified that we have the vehicle replacement program already in place and working, whereas vehicles that use fossil fuels age out, they're replaced depending on what the use will be with either all-electrics or hybrids, and just pushing the entire city fleet that direction will have an impact. But in addition to that, I think we need to work also with people to see if we can get some of the service stations, uh, some of the other institutional entities to start thinking about charging stations, because it does no good to have an electric vehicle if you can't put fuel, as it were, back into it. So, I think we need to start trying to find ways to incentivize installation of charging stations, especially the fast chargers.
Yeah, we actually are in the process now, um, through our grants division, of working on the Volkswagen grant, um, and are looking at adding a charging station to the Jackson Street parking lot, which would be a fast charging station available to the public. And so, we're getting fairly close, I believe, Bill, on that application. And so, so, yeah, I, that it'll be a critical component, you know, and some of the things that we can look at are, Kelly had mentioned, was, you know, things like in the building code, having them, not necessarily, they don't need to, they don't need to put in a charging station in a new home, but having it ready for a charging station, having conduit in place, having the circuitry set up so that there's, there's, there's room for it in the panel, and, and so that that can be ready. And those are things that we can certainly look at.
Uh, Maureen, that's gonna hurt.
My question on that still becomes the fact that when people do their, start doing their developments, and we've already approved that development, I get caught in the fact that we can't retroactively apply a new set of rules to them. And so, my biggest concern is that retroactivity, and so we have great ideas, but now we have all of this development happening without those rules. And so, I'm thinking about how you can't force someone when you don't have the power of the law to do that right now. And so, how do we make sure that, in fact, we create a system which makes people want to do it? And I also wanted to reiterate what Brandy said, which is you came here looking for direction from us, and to tell you the truth, we're here because we want direction from you, and as soon as you say, we can do this, you know, you totally have my support. That's, that's really what it is, and so, it's a mutuality here.
Sandra, you're...
I absolutely agree with both of those things, and if, with all of the work that you've put in, I mean, I can do my own research, and I can go to the commissions and listen to them, and I'm grateful for the work, but this is your full-time job, and I appreciate that. So, absolutely, I support that. My one question is, just when you're reading through all of these things and doing your research, are there, are there any little flags that stand out to you that make you nervous or think, ah, how are we gonna work around this to, to make this work?
Yeah, I, I think for me personally, and then I'll, you know, Kelly's taking a deep dive, I'll let her take a crack at it. For me personally, one of the things that make, that, that just throughout my career, I've learned the hard way multiple times, is there's a lot of things that are technically possible that aren't practically possible, and in my experience, the practical beats the crap out of the technical every single time. And so, there's a lot of things that I, I, I get, they're a great idea, and, and on paper, they look amazing, but implementation doesn't, doesn't work out as well. And so, if it's not something either that you can get people to participate in, or that, that practically you have the resources to actually carry out the program appropriately, or, or you just don't have it at the scale that would make any difference, I think that's one of the things that I'm, I'm always concerned with as we look through these things, is we want to have an impact. We don't, we don't just want to have something that we trot out, and it, it looks good on paper, but it has no real-world impact. And so, as we look through these, that's something that we try to be very careful to do, is say, okay, this may sound really good, but does it do anything? And if it doesn't do anything, then we're not interested. We want to have the thing that we, we know we can actually carry out. And so, there are a lot of programs that you'll see that's like, oh, man, that sounds amazing. I don't know how many apps I have on my phone that I download, because it sounded amazing, but I never use the damn thing. And so, we, we don't want to end up in that situation, we want to have things that are actually applicable.
Tyler, you had mentioned the RF-100 plan, the ICLI plan, and being plans that are very, that are sustainable, that we can achieve. Brandy was in, in favor of that, and I think Sandra, as well as Maureen was as well, if I, I caught it right. Don't want to speak for them, uh, so, I want to see from what the other councils, we've got three other counselors here. Anne?
Absolutely, yeah, I do have one question, if you could reiterate the timeline, knowing that we're looking at spring of 2022, for, that's the climate action plan, though, correct?
So, so what we would do, Anne, is that, yeah, we, we would be looking at spring 2022 for adoption of the climate action plan, and so, we would, well, we would start the drafting process coming out of this meeting of a draft climate action plan. And then, we would come back to council with, with iterations of that draft, and you give us instructions, you could say, I want this expanded, I'm not sure about this, et cetera. We'd work through that process with our partners, we'd go out to public comment, and then the, the goal would be to have a refined, finalized version of the action plan for spring 2022, because that gives us time for our budget planning process, so that if, if the council decides that they do want to participate, for example, in the Avista program, we can budget accordingly. If there are different components or different programs that we launch, say, there's, maybe there's a tree program that we want to expand or launch, um, we can look at including that in the budget and go through that planning process. And so, so, yeah, that, timing-wise, that really works out well, because it gives us the ability. It's, it's something that we, the direction we got clear from the council in the last workshop is that you guys wanted real action.
Yeah.
Real action, as everybody knows, starts with the city budget. That's, if it's not budgeted for, it doesn't happen.
How about you, Erin?
Yeah, I think so too. I want to see programs that move forward that actually have the tangible benefit. I mean, signing on to some of these programs, we all feel good about it, but if we don't do anything about it, we're just kicking the can down the road to some future council or some future generation, which is...
Well, these kids right out here, talk to us Monday night.
Oh, y'all. So, yeah, so, uh, because contained within that climate action plan are the actual tangible ways forward to address the goals stipulated into these sign-on operations, so I have no trouble at all with that, but also keeping in mind that, given the resources available, it's not something that's all gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take a fair long while to implement even some of the easiest parts of the plan, but if we don't make progress now, it, it just moves the goal that much further down the way, so, yeah.
Gina?
I, I could not be more enthusiastic about this. He had me at that picture with the roots on the, on the flowers. I will say, though, I want us to somehow make this an invitation to our citizens as well.
Yep, they need to have input.
That is definitely part of the plan.
A community effort, let us lead it, but boy, kill us with information, lists of native plants and, and ways that we can cut down, take public transit once a week, and whatever. But, but make it fun, make it a community effort, and I think we'll see both of those numbers come down.
Maureen?
Kind of like this little, I was just following up on that, thinking a little passport thing, you know, like you go around and you visit this one, and you get a check off, it's like, okay, I did my bus, and I did this, and, and I can then actually say, I personally have had this, or I did this in terms of my house. And I guess I really feel like we have those ideas, but how do you make that applicable to other people, like me?
One of the things that we're really excited about is, you, you'll recall, we, it came through the council a couple of years ago, the, the Environmental Stewardship Award Program. When we, when we had the FOG program, fats, oils, and grease program for sewer, council had directed us to have an incentive program, so it wasn't just a stick without a carrot. And so, we, we thought, well, let's go broader than just one tiny program and have a more broad program that applied to, to landscaping, and water use, and storm use, and all these things. And so, as we look at a climate action plan, we've already got a framework there that we can use to really incentivize and, and bring that stuff together and promote all of these sustainability programs within the city. So, we're super stoked to get that launched, because we had, we had our early adopters already on board and lined up, and then COVID kind of put that whole thing on the skids for a minute. But we're, we're really excited to, to, to have a climate action plan to be the guiding document that we can update that program, and really try and make this a, very much a community effort.
Okay, I want to go to Brandy, and then Anne.
Uh, so, um, yeah, it looked like in the program with the, the signing on to the Race to Zero, kind of, a big part of it is that community engagement and helping, uh, those entities that sign on to, to make that happen, to reach people, and as one of the letters in here, I, I can't fight at the moment, but really said, we have to have community buy-in, which many people have talked about. So, that has to be an important part of it, and, you know, them as the, uh, sort of leaders of that program, and that, that seems to be integral to that. And then, just the other thing I wanted to say as far as, you know, some of the things that might not be feasible now, and we all know that technology is changing really quickly, that's why these kinds of climate goals are, uh, set out, you know, far into the future, because if we waited until we had it all, it's too late. So, you got to start with that aggressive goal, and know that, you know, what's, what's possible now, what's possible in five years, in 10 years, are going to be different than what we can do now. So, it's, um, it's time to get going on it, for sure.
Brandy, to your point about community involvement, after being mayor for eight years and previously a council for our community, does not like surprises, ladies and gentlemen. They, they want to be involved, simple as that, and they should be, because that's how it works. We work as a citizen group, as a city. There's no reason we can't have some fun with this, is how I see it, and make the thing work. Okay, Anne, I'll go you now.
Yeah, I just wanted to expand a little bit on my support as well. I distinctly remember the first discussion we had about this, and the going back and forth about whether or not this philosophically fit in with our mission statement, which I probably have the best view of in the House, up on the wall over there. And that was the, the first time that we talked about explicitly making it a priority. So, it's just really exciting to see the development, and I don't want to leave tonight without thanking you all and reiterating our appreciation for all of your work, and also to the community members, which you touched on, but for everything that they've done in terms of their knowledge, their activism, keeping us accountable, working on pushing us towards committing to something as a representative body, I know that this problem feels very... Um, I know that this problem feels very urgent for a lot of people, myself included. And so balancing, trying to take the time to make, make something that we can feel really good about committing to and, and also recognizing the urgency is, is really important. So thank you all.
I have to say, I appreciate this meeting, it's kind of a follow-up on that is because at some point, I think I'm feeling like it's urgent and we're not doing anything and I'm thinking, oh no, we don't need $20,000 for a consultant. We've got a team of experts working on this right here in the city, city staff and city people who volunteer to spend a lot of time on that. And I just think I want to make sure that people understand we're systematically, quickly, but strategically moving forward with this. And, you know, I, I want to say that I, the city staff is amazing, as well as the people on the commissions that are doing a lot of work.
I, I was, I got a call from a gentleman who left me a message, I called him back this week and he was, uh, a gentleman who'd spent a career studying this, he taught at a university back east, he moved to Moscow because he loved Moscow five years ago, but his, his whole career was spent in climate action. And he was super excited as he read through this packet and he says, if there's anything I can do to help, let me know. I mean, that's just the kind of thing that we have routinely happen here that is just such a unique thing that we really appreciate.
Well, Tyler, I think, Tyler, Kelly, Kyle, thank you so much for your hard work that you've done on this. On April the 26th, this council did ask, in fact, do you come up with something? It seems to me like we're there and we know the direction we're headed. We'll be very looking forward to, the plan is it's refined to come back to this council. Does that sound good to everybody?
It does.
And I just want to thank, and I also want to thank the folks that are in our audience,